Hi, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would the secretary please call the roll?
Anna Braun.
Here.
Timothy Cummings.
Here.
Jamie Falco.
Here.
Louis Figaroa.
Here.
Lori Herrick.
Here.
Lee Wu Hong.
Here.
Lori Lacks. Wilbur Pan. And Heather Glass.
Here. We have a quorum, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And good evening. All right, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published, I'm sorry, be published at having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Homeneus Tribune, the Alternative Press of East Brunswick, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings with the exception of executive session discussions are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. All right, and we have a need for a closed session. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and whereas these subjects are within the exception to the Open Public Meeting Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session pursuant to NJSA 10-4-12B, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, all items listed on the agenda, whereas the length of the closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action will be taken. Can I have a motion? That's her, and a second. Tim, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, we're in closed, we will be back in one hour. All right, and we are back. And that is leading us directly into the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Wos. Thank you, President Wos. Good evening, everyone. It is with great sadness that I share the news of the passing of retired teacher Dr. Alan Brodmann. Alan began his career in 1992 at Churchill Junior High School and later joined the high school faculty and retired in 2020. Even after his retirement, he remained a dedicated contributor to our school community, continuing to support the IPEL program with passion and purpose. In recognition of his remarkable impact on students and colleagues alike, Alan was inducted into the district's Wall of Honor in 2023, and his plaque is among those in the very back of this room. Memorial service will be held to honor his life and legacy on Friday, that's this Friday, May 9th, at 11:30 a.m. at the East Brunswick Jewish Center. The artwork on display in the boardroom this evening was created by students from Irwin Elementary School. The art teacher of these talented students is Brooke Suvorn, and Joanne Shemilowicz is the principal. The Butterfly Effect Kindness Initiative celebrated its fourth recognition gala with 350 community members in attendance on Thursday, May 1st, at Churchill Junior High School, honoring students who have sparked positive change through acts of kindness in their schools, community, and even globally. The event featured an inspiring, interactive kindness gallery where Churchill Junior High School and East Brunswick High School students proudly showcased their passion projects. Attendees explored a variety of heartfelt displays, spoke with student leaders, and listened to powerful stories of how small acts of kindness make a big difference. Throughout the evening, students reflected on how their projects impacted those they helped in their personal growth. From uplifting messages to community-driven initiatives, the ripple effects of their compassion were evident in every story shared. In a touching finale, students were honored for their leadership and compassion with a sparkling crystal butterfly award, a symbol of hope and transformation of their good deeds. The gala concluded on a sweet note with a dessert reception, celebrating the students' efforts and the bright future their kindness is helping to shape. Thank you to all the sponsors, as well as the Megan Schulman Foundation EBEF and the EBEA Pride Committee. During spring recess, new serving lines were installed at Hammershold Upper Elementary School, providing students with a modern dining experience and a wider variety of meal options. It's important for the community to know this project was entirely funded by the Child Nutrition Enterprise Fund, and according to state and federal guidelines, retained earnings from this fund are specifically designated to support the operation and enhancement of the school nutrition program. That is a squeaky door. Last month, during a busy lunch period at the high school, a student began choking on food and was seeking help. School security officer Maurice, also known as Mo Finney, quickly responded and successfully administered the Heimlich maneuver, partially reopening the student's airway before additional care was provided by our school nurse. Thanks to SSO Finney's initial swift and decisive actions, the student made a full recovery. Unfortunately, SSO Mo could not be here with us tonight, but we extend our deepest gratitude to him for his heroic actions. In sports, Bella Stagliano recorded her 200th career strikeout versus Sayerville, and that is one good-looking softball field. Jaden Hee and Ramit Shah are the GMC Tournament First Doubles Champions, so congratulations to them. And Tim Rissavon and Aja Garia are the GMC Tournament Second Doubles Champions, so congratulations to them as well. Congratulations to our April High School Athletes of the Month. Students were selected for this honor by the coaching staff based on performance, demonstration of leadership, effort in practice, and as always, for modeling exceptional character. The Arts Department will be hosting their fifth annual Outdoor Art Walk. The art installation will run from May 16th through June 16th at the municipal complex on Civic Center Drive. Student music compositions can also be accessed through QR codes found on the grounds to accompany the art viewing experience, and we are thrilled once again to present this collaboration between the visual art and music departments. Please consider joining us for the opening ceremony on Friday, May 16th, from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. Student music compositions will be played through speakers on the ground, only for this one hour for you to enjoy while viewing the artwork. And additionally, Churchill Junior High School students will be selling ceramic works to benefit the Empty Bowls Charity Fund. And just a reminder, if we do not use our remaining one emergency closing day by Friday, May 23rd, then Tuesday, May 27th will be a non-school day for students and 10-month staff. District offices will be open. And we'll have to send a reminder out to people again, I'm sure, just to let them know so they don't mysteriously show up. Finally, tonight, I'm announcing that I will retire my position as superintendent, effective February 1st, 2026, to pursue a new opportunity. Serving as superintendent of East Brunswick Public Schools has been the honor of my professional life, and I'm immensely proud of the work that we have accomplished together in support of our students, staff, and families. And I want to thank all the boards I've worked for and the trust they have all placed in me over the years. I'm grateful for the collaborative spirit and shared dedication that define our district. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Woleski. We have some resolutions of appreciation and recognition. Are we having people up for this?
We will have people join us up here.
Have people join us? Am I reading up there or am I reading back here?
Whichever you would like. We can do them one at a time, up there.
We are doing them one at a time up there. All right, we have a resolution of appreciation, faculty and staff. Whereas every member of the East Brunswick Public School faculty and staff is a vital partner in our students' education, and whereas their collective dedication fosters a welcoming and secure learning environment, enabling students to achieve their full potential, and whereas the dedication and commitment of all the members of the faculty and staff are directly related to the outstanding accomplishments of our students, and whereas the lasting legacy of a sound education is built upon their contributions, and whereas faculty-staff appreciation was May 5th through May 9th, 2025, and now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education expresses its profound gratitude and commends all faculty and staff for their unwavering dedication to our students' success. Any motion for this?
No motion.
Falco, second. And Lori, any discussion?
Dr. Zbicki and Teen, would you mind coming up?
A vote.
Congratulations, thank you all.
Thank you so much, thank you. Thank you. This time, we will vote before we call anybody else.
And I will pause, I will not say anything.
You will pause, we will vote. We will vote, yes. All right, we have a resolution of appreciation for Administrative Professionals Day. Whereas administrative professionals are indispensable partners in the East Brunswick Public Schools' mission to educate our students, and whereas they foster a productive learning environment, provide invaluable support to all stakeholders, and ensure the smooth operation of our schools, and whereas administrative professionals provide valuable services to our students, faculty, staff, parents, and other members of the community, and whereas they are vital to effective communication and contribute significantly to the district's excellent reputation, and whereas Administrative Professional Day was April 23rd, 2025, and now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education expresses its sincerest gratitude to our administrative professionals for their unwavering commitment to our students and schools. And I have a motion.
Moved.
All right, Jamie and Anna, discussion?
Who moved on that, I'm sorry?
Jamie and Anna.
Oh, thank you.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries. And do we have?
Dr. Zbicki and Teen again?
Thank you. All right, we got the order right that time.
Yes.
All right, here we go. Resolution of appreciation, Lunch Hero Day. Whereas nutritious school meals are vital to student well-being and academic success, and whereas our dedicated child nutrition staff provide these essential meals with commitment and care, and whereas the individuals who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support, and whereas the day of Friday, May 2nd, is School Lunch Hero Day, now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Public Schools express their deep appreciation to those valuable employees and commend their good works on behalf of the children. Can I have a motion, please? Jamie and then Anna, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries.
We do.
Who do we have? I'm going to go off just a moment before Rishi. You can tell me how I'm violating all kinds of procedure, but I did want to say, it is very hard to make a comment while standing in the front there, but I just want to say personally, I am deeply appreciative of the teachers and the support staff and the administrative professionals and our lunch heroes. I know all of us come to these meetings because we have children or stake in the schools, and you only have to have a child in the schools for a very little bit of time before you hear about our teachers, our support staff, and the people in the lunchrooms. They're very, very important, especially if your people are tiny and they need help. And I do not think that we would run without our administrative professionals as well, so I am deeply grateful and appreciative. And now, please tell me that Senior Assassin is almost over?
Almost done.
Okay. Rishi with the student representatives' report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's been a very long time since I've been able to less share my high school experience with you, but many exciting things have occurred since then. Students wrapped up marking Period III, enjoyed their spring break, participated in statewide testing, had a short break before facing the unfortunate task of AP exams this week. AP exams began on Monday with classes such as AP Biology and AP Government taking off their morning and afternoon sessions. Students will continue testing throughout the week, this week and next, hoping to earn perfect scores and put their year-long learning to the test. Many teachers have created creative approaches to helping students prepare. In my AP Literature class, for example, recreated scenes from the books we read throughout the year to better retain knowledge and specific literary details. I personally think my Heimlich impersonation was great, but my classmates didn't seem to agree. At the end of March, 92 students were inducted into the National Honor Society at East Brunswick. Our current NHS board and advisors worked hard to organize the special event and make it an unforgettable day for our inductees. Students lined up in the auditorium to receive their NHS diplomas and participate in the candlelighting ceremony, where they pledged to uphold their responsibilities as diligent student leaders. Senior and vice president of NHS Hannah Smutko remarked, "It was an amazing experience watching so many hardworking and passionate students receive recognition for their year-long participation in the National Honor Society. I'm beyond confident that as seniors, we are leaving this organization in capable hands." On April 23rd, athletes took center stage at the high school's annual Spring Signing Day. 14 student athletes were honored for committing to play a collegiate sport, showcasing their excellence both on the field and in the classroom. The media center was decorated with various college colors, banners, and mascots. It was truly a spectacle to see the wide array of colleges and sports represented. This was the largest signing day in East Brunswick history, a testament to not only the dedication of our student athletes, but also the incredible support from staff, coaches, and administrations who help students thrive. I was proud to be one of the 14 athletes who were honored to participate in such a momentous event. Having my parents and friends there to celebrate with me made it a truly special event, and I want to thank Mr. Malta for putting it together. Last week, two East Brunswick alumni returned to the high school to be inducted into the East Brunswick Hall of Fame. The first inductee was Michael Seibel, an accomplished entrepreneur known for founding ventures such as Twitch TV and Y Combinator. The second was Zach Morrison, a writer for comedy shows including The Tonight Show, The Late Show, and Saturday Night Live. Each alumnus hosted a two-hour masterclass, giving students the opportunity to hear about their journey beyond the classroom and gain insight into their lives. I had the chance to attend Michael Seibel's session, where he spoke in depth about the pros and cons of college, managing wealth and assets, and what he looks for in future entrepreneurs. Two things that stood out to me was the first, that even successful rich entrepreneurs procrastinate assignments in high school until the day before, and East Brunswick was essential to its success as an entrepreneur and helped him mature and develop the skills that he needed for the future. May 1st marked National College Commitment Day for seniors across the country, and almost all East Brunswick students have now finalized their decision for the next four years. Students selected colleges that align with their future career paths while also offering opportunities for growth and enriching experience. This year's commitments have been especially diverse, with students heading to prestigious universities across the country, not just local to EB. Many of these commitments are featured on the high school's college commitments page on social media, which has been working hard to showcase each student's exciting next step. The high school's official decision day is on June 10th, where students will wear their college gear and celebrate their postgraduate plans. As a senior, it's definitely bittersweet to watch the days until graduation tick away, but these meetings have been a great way for me to share my memorable senior year. Thank you.
Thank you, Rishi. I also, I wanted to add that for students taking APs, we're about halfway through, right?
Like a quarter way through.
A quarter of the way through? As somebody who teaches students that are taking APs, I will tell you, it feels like we're three-quarters of the way through. It feels like we've been doing this for weeks. But I just want to congratulate any parents of students that are taking APs or students that are taking APs, because I know it feels like the accomplishment hasn't happened yet at this point, you know, the test is looming large. But truthfully, to choose a course with so much rigor and to show the colleges and to take that higher college-level course is an accomplishment in itself. The test is just icing on the cake. So congratulations, and congratulations on your signing day, and congratulations on not being gotten by my very own child during Senior Assassin. This was such a problem, we canceled or removed one of our meetings?
Yes.
During the time in which perhaps my own senior was trying to find you, so.
Maybe that's why we moved the meeting.
I was heavily questioned as to why that had to be, because we were, well, I was not. Someone was trying to get you with a water balloon pretty hard. All right, moving from Senior Assassin to weightier topics, we have a public hearing on the fiscal year 2026 school district budget.
Now, if you take one and pass it down. Take one and pass it, please.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is the public hearing for the East Brunswick Public Schools' budget for the 2025-2026 fiscal year. Tonight, we will walk through the key aspects of our budget, explain the process, and provide context for the financial decisions made. First, let's look at some important facts about the district. East Brunswick Public Schools is the 23rd-largest school district in New Jersey as of the Fall 2024 New Jersey Department of Education report. We are also the largest employer in East Brunswick, with approximately 1,600 employees. Our district serves a significant population of students, which rivals the size of entire nearby towns as a whole. Our operations involve a major transit system, managing 588 routes, covering 3.6 million miles through the course of the year, and transporting 2.55 million passengers annually. Now, certainly, we don't have that many students, but when you count the students boarding and the students deboarding every single day to school and from school, it amounts to 2.55 million passengers. And this is based on the October 2024 data reported to the Department of Education. We are also a major food service provider, serving over 1 million total meals annually, including over 626,000 lunches, over 283,000 à la carte items, and over 94,000 breakfasts, this all during the 2023-2024 school year. Our scale in food service rivals or exceeds the average for top 100 independent restaurants. Looking at our physical footprint, the district's buildings encompass nearly 1.5 million square feet, which is larger than the Brunswick Square Mall and rivals the nearby Freehold Raceway Mall, and our land area covers 274 acres. The district is committed to controlling costs and participates in various shared services. We have an energy program, engage in cooperative purchasing with other districts, both within New Jersey and nationally, and utilize in-house transportation services along with multi-tiered busing. We also participate in a dental consortium. Specific cost control examples include health benefits programs, comparisons to the State Employee Health Benefits Program. Now, we recognize that the increase in health benefits budget is substantial. The district's program nonetheless is $3.8 million less than participating in the State Employee Health Benefit Program. Savings are also seen in areas like printing and copying services, which account for an average of $401,000 per year. Over the terms of these contracts, the savings have exceeded $6 million. Additionally, the district's participation in the Educational Data Cooperative has saved $322,000 in fiscal year 2025 to date, and a total savings of over $1.6 billion over the last five years. Regarding administrative costs and staffing for the 2023-24 year, our budgeted per pupil amount for total administration was $1,930 per pupil, which is lower than the state average of $2,095 per pupil. Similarly, our administration salaries and benefits were budgeted at $628 per pupil compared to the state average of $1,640 per pupil. We also have a higher ratio of students to administrative personnel and faculty to administrative personnel compared to the state averages. The district is also a revenue producer. The Community Programs Enterprise operates programs such as the Early Morning Program, After School Kids, and Early Learning Academy. The Facility Use Enterprise manages facilities rentals, the largest of which is the Performing Arts Center. These programs have consistently transferred budgeted funds to the General Fund and generated a net income. For instance, the Community Programs Enterprise, the budgeted transfer to the General Fund increased from over $403,000 in fiscal year 2022 to $954,000 in the current fiscal year 2025, and is budgeted at over $1.2 million for the fiscal 2026 year budget. The net income from these programs has also grown significantly, reaching $974,000 as of March 31, 2025, for the current fiscal year. For the Facility Use Enterprise, transfers to the General Fund and net income have varied. The budgeted transfer was $351,830 in fiscal year 2022, increasing to $694,713 for both fiscal '25 and fiscal 2026. The net income for facilities used reached $672,246 as of March 31st of this year. The net income for facilities used reached $672,246 as of March 31 of this year. And the district prioritizes financial transparency. This is achieved through accessible information like board meeting agendas, which include monthly financial reports, bill lists, contract awards, and grants. We also undergo an annual comprehensive financial report, which is the audit. It's an independent audit, which includes a public presentation by the auditor, is posted on the district website, and is submitted for New Jersey Department of Education review. We are proud to report that our audits have consistently resulted in no findings or recommendations. None of this is new, and the information has been available for many years without having to ask for anyone that is interested. This commitment to financial management has earned the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting from ASBO International for fiscal year 2023, marking our 11th consecutive year receiving this recognition. Additionally, the district has earned the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for fiscal year 2023, marking our ninth out of 10 consecutive years receiving this recognition. And beyond finance, the district always strives for excellence, recognized through numerous students, school, and staff accomplishments. East Brunswick High School specifically was noted by the Middle States Association of Colleges and Schools Accreditation for Growth Validation Team in 2023 as one of the finest schools in the nation, with a strong academic program, supported by ample financial resources, and excellent leadership. Understanding our budget requires understanding the context of state aid. In July 2018, Governor Phil Murphy signed landmark legislation, which is known as S-2, to modernize and equitably distribute school funding in New Jersey. This legislation aimed to address what Governor Murphy described as "eight years of neglect and underfunding of public schools by $9 billion." S-2 modified the existing school funding law, eliminating adjustment aid and state aid growth caps, and allowing adjustments to tax growth limitations for certain districts. The goal was a more equitable funding distribution through the School Funding Reform Act, or ESFRA, formula. The legislation mandated a multi-year transition period, starting in fiscal year 2020 and concluding by fiscal year 2025, during which aid would be reduced for overfunded districts and increased for underfunded districts to reach their appropriate SFRA levels. Under S-2, any district losing aid and underspending was required to increase their prior year school tax levy by 2% until fiscal 2025. Abbott districts losing aid but with high tax rates were held harmless from aid losses through fiscal 2025. County vocational school districts were protected from state aid decreases. Underfunded districts, such as East Brunswick, would see aid increases funded by aid reductions from other districts and additional state appropriations, with the goal of fully funding by fiscal 2025. The bill also permitted Abbott districts to exceed the 2% tax cap without voter approval to reach their expected local levy until fiscal 2025. Non-Abbott districts, like East Brunswick, remain subject to the 2% tax cap. So let's look at state aid trends over the recent fiscal years. From fiscal 2020 through fiscal 2022, uncapped state aid. Now, this data is directly from the reports provided by the New Jersey Department of Education. From fiscal 2020 to fiscal 2022, uncapped state aid increased from $26.9 million to $34.9 million. Now, that uncapped state aid is not what we received. The aid differential, which is the additional state aid that should have been received by the district, increased by 8.1 million to 14.3 million. Now, that's what additional aid we should have received in those years. Meanwhile, the state aid adjustment, which is the additional state aid actually received, increased from $1.1 million in fiscal 2020 to $5.3 million in fiscal 2022. The district was on the path of receiving the funding to which it was entitled. Kicking off from fiscal '22 and looking through to fiscal 2024, uncapped state aid continued to rise, reaching $41.9 million. The state aid differential, again, that's the additional state aid that should have been received by the district, ranged from $14.3 million to $13.5 million, and then to $8.6 million. Meanwhile, the state aid adjustment, again, that is the additional aid actually received, ranged from $5.3 million to $7.4 million to $6.5 million. While there remained a gap between the state aid differential and the state aid adjustment, the district still was on the path toward increased funding. However, the trend changed for fiscal 2025 and 2026, as we all know. Uncapped state aid decreased from $41.9 million in fiscal '24 to $38.5 million in fiscal 2025, and further down to $33.3 million in fiscal year 2026. The state aid differential shifted from an amount that should have been received by the district to one of reduced aid. East Brunswick was not an S-2 district, and the trend data showed that East Brunswick's state aid was to continue increasing. Then the rules changed, without notice. So I want to walk you through a key aspect of how our district manages the finances, specifically regarding reserves. First, it's important to understand that the district is not permitted to have a traditional savings account, in the way many of us might think of a personal or business savings account. Instead, our financial structure requires specific types of fund reserves. These reserves serve distinct purposes and are governed by strict laws and regulations. So let's start with the mandatory reserve, the undesignated general fund balance. A district board of education must maintain this balance. The required amount is 2% of the budgeted general fund budget for the pre-budget year, or $250,000, whichever is greater. For East Brunswick, that is the 2% of the prior year's budget. The fund is intended for emergency use only and requires the approval of the Commissioner of Education for use. Beyond emergencies, the balance provides a measure that is used to rate districts for bonding purposes. Speaking of bonding, our district recently received a rating from Moody's. Moody's is the rating agency. In March 2025, Moody's rated the district AA2. An AA2 rating signifies high credit quality for bonds. It indicates a strong capacity to meet financial obligations and presents relatively low risk of default. The sources also noted, and that's Moody's, noted that this rating would be improved if the state permitted a larger undesignated general fund balance, which it does not. So this highlights the importance of reserves in demonstrating financial health to rating In addition to the mandatory reserve, districts also have options for establishing other reserves. So I want to review two primary examples. One optional reserve is the Capital Reserve Account. The law requires that a district board of education shall be prohibited from using the funds in the Capital Reserve Account for current expenses. Current expenses are the daily operating expenses of the school district, salaries, benefits, supplies, utilities, and so forth. These funds shall be used only to implement capital projects and augment a capital project. This account is strictly for long-term investments in our infrastructure and facilities. Another optional reserve is the Current Expense Emergency Reserve Account. This account shall be used to finance reasonably unanticipated fund current expense costs required for a thorough and efficient education as defined by law. It can also be used to finance school security improvements. There's a limit on the size of this account. It shall not exceed $250,000, or 1% of the district's general fund operating budget, up to a maximum of $1 million, whichever is greater. This provides a cushion for unexpected operating costs or security needs within defined limits. Here's the catch: financial resources must be available to fund these reserves. Let's move on to the fiscal 2025-2026 budget facts. The budget development process is comprehensive, starting in September 2024 with initial planning and budgeting proposals submitted by November 1 of 2024. Formal budget meetings and compilation and analysis took place from November of '24 through April of '25, and the community saw a change in process this year through the Board's Committee of the Whole Process. That process brought a lot of pain to aspects of the community, where the community got to see some of the difficult conversations that the Board might have otherwise had in a finance committee setting, that might not have ultimately made it out here as a final decision process. But the good and the bad all comes out with Committee of the Whole. Key state-level events included the Governor's Funding Formula announcement on February 25th, and the release of state aid on February 27th, and the tentative budget was adopted on March 19th. I've reviewed this chart in the past. It depicts the state aid trend through the reductions that have occurred in 2025-2026. I'll leave this up here for a moment for you to see what had happened over the period of time as the district moved toward receiving the full state aid it was entitled to, and then had unexpected cuts occur. Next, charter schools. There are folks that are tired of hearing me talk about charter schools, but I'm going to talk about it anyway. The chart depicts the ever-increasing charter school trend drawing financial resources from the district budget. The charter school increase for going into next year was $668,000. That money comes out of the budget. It's not funded in any way, shape, or form other than by the budget. And then, this chart depicts the fiscal '25 and fiscal '26 state aid and charter school obligations, and it provides a comparison of the two, and what changed in the state aid realm, and the variances in charter schools. Due to the financial context, including state aid reductions, increased charter school costs, the tentative budget included several proposed reductions. These were discussed and agreed upon by consensus of the Board. Take a few moments now to look at these slides. All of these items were discussed in detail at prior board meetings. Note, some of these reductions, and they're noted with an asterisk, like late bus service at Churchill and Hammersholl, graduation transportation, the Churchill and Hammersholl band and orchestra co-teaching, and the Hammersholl school schedule revisions were restored To help balance the tentative budget, revenue increases were also approved by the Board's consensus. These include increasing fees for clubs, activities, and athletics, and increasing fees for community programs like ELA, ASK, and EMP. After the tentative budget was adopted, further revisions were made by consensus of the Board. These include significant restorations, reinstating one fine arts teaching position, reinstating transportation for high school graduation, and this was offset by eliminating employee mileage reimbursements, restoring late bus service at Churchill and Hammersholl to one day per week, while reducing high school late bus service to one day per week. And we reviewed the data behind that so that it was something that is workable for the future. We reviewed that in a public setting. Other revisions included restoring full-time bus driver schedules, abolishing two teaching positions due to decreased enrollment, and two full-time bus driver positions. One part-time bus driver position was established, and budgeted transportation costs were reduced due to contractor agreements. Further reductions were made to contractual professional memberships, contracted interpreter services, document translation services, and postage allocation due to efficiencies. The cost for EduClima was reduced based on an updated vendor quote, and the ESL Summer Academy celebration was eliminated because the summer program was cut. Health benefit costs were adjusted to reflect position restorations and reductions. The acquisition of the Grape Seed Pre-K program was deferred. The unemployment reserve payment was also reduced. Critical restorations involving teaching positions required seeking state approval and applying for the Tax Levy Incentive Aid Program. This program allows a district to request approval for additional expenditures, where 5% of the cost receives additional state aid and 95% increases the tax levy. Applications were submitted to restore 2.5 positions for the Churchill and band orchestra co-teaching, and two Hammersholl band orchestra co-teaching positions. The application also included restoration of 10 Hammersholl teaching positions associated with maintaining the current school scheduling format. The Department of Education responded to these requests. The department approved the request for the 10 Hammersholl classroom teachers, stating that it was consistent with satisfying thoroughness and efficiency standards under the law. However, the Department of Education did not approve the requested expenditures for band and orchestra co-teaching positions at Hammersholl and Churchill, stating they were, quote, "not considered necessary to satisfy the thoroughness and efficiency standards." Nevertheless, the final budget includes the restoration of this component. This was achieved through the health benefit cost adjustment related to the restoration of all of all the teaching positions submitted to the Department of Education for consideration. So what that did was by restoring those positions and their related health benefits, it increased the adjustment that we were permitted to take for health benefits and was able to fund, that adjustment is able to fund, those positions for the band and The final budget included an increase in revenue and the amount of the tax levy incentive aid approved by the Department of Education. So based on the final budget and staffing, the projected class size averages for K-4 are kindergarten at 18, grade 1 at 17, grade 2 19, grade 3 19, and grade 4 20. The final general fund budget for fiscal 2026 is $199,229,812. The budgeted tax levy includes increases in both the general fund and debt service fund. Debt service fund, as a reminder, as we've discussed in the past, is where we pay our The general fund tax levy increase of $5,56,637 is a 3.49% increase. This increase includes the mandatory use of banked cap, an adjustment for the increase in healthcare costs, and the Department of Education's approved application for additional expenditures related to the Hammersholl schedule. The debt service fund tax levy increase is $411,868 for an 8.79% increase. So combined, combined, the, I'm sorry, composite increase, sorry, composite increase is not properly reflected there. It's one error I made on the spreadsheets. But $5.4 million, almost $5.5 million, but coming to 3.65% overall on the increase between the debt service and the general fund. So to illustrate the impact on property taxes, let's look at an example based on a property tax bill of $10,000. The school tax portion of that bill is approximately 65%, or $6,500 per year. Under the tentative budget, the estimated cost increase for the general fund and debt service fund was approximately $184 per year on that $6,500. After the net budget restorations and adjustments in the final budget, the estimated cost increase for the general fund and debt service fund is 3.65% or comes to approximately $237 on that $6,500 school tax. Looking towards the future, now, we anticipate further reductions in state aid. For context, a 3% reduction in fiscal 2026 funding would equal $1.12 million. Now, we're using 3% because the state capped the reduction this year to 3%. And on one of the prior slides, it showed the amount that would have been reduced, which was in excess of $5 million. So if the state continues on this path, that's ultimately where we are headed in terms of reductions in state aid. But we don't have a crystal ball, and there's no way to know what ultimately the state will do in terms of changes to how they're going to apply the funding formula. We also face tax levy limitations, notably the 2% cap on the fiscal 2026 general fund levy, which currently limits the increase to $3 million plus any statutory adjustments. Now, that's key because when you look at the potential of there being a $3 million cap growth with no other adjustments and a loss in state aid for next year, there is no way that that will cover salaries and benefits. It's not going to happen. The exact amount of the statutory adjustments, such as those for health benefit costs and our allowable growth towards the local fair share under the state formula, remain unknown. And if you remember going back to the dates for when information is provided to the school district, we literally had only, I think it was three weeks, from the date that the state provided the data with which to work and an adoption of a tentative budget. Navigating these challenges may unfortunately necessitate further reductions in programs and services in the future. So we've aimed to be transparent about the budget development process, the financial realities we face, including state aid reductions and charter school increases, and the efforts made to control costs while striving to maintain quality education. But this is a difficult task and will continue to be a difficult task for the near term. Ms. Goss, I'll turn this back to you.
All right. So this is where we take questions on this?
Board discussion, if you'd like to have that, and then you can open it up for public comment.
All right. So at this point, I'm going to take board discussion or questions. I'm actually going to start. I just wanted a little bit of clarity. So the state approved the tax levy to reinstate the Hughes Schedule the way it was.
Correct.
But the state said that our music program was beyond.
Yes.
What a public school.
For Hammersholl and Churchill was not a requirement under the thorough and efficiency standards under the law.
Well, we knew it was beyond excellent, but we wish the state would have let us have the levy for that. My question is, so we were able to, we were able to fund it for this year, right? The music program?
Yes.
But moving forward?
That will remain to be seen based on the totality of what our revenues are and what our expenses are. I think what's really important to note is that, you know, the opportunities for revenue enhancement are very limited. There aren't really any kind of grants out there. I know folks have said, you know, apply for grants. There aren't a lot of grants out there, if any, that would bridge any kind of a gap that we have had to deal with. Usually, they're targeted to specific purposes. You've seen regarding our enterprises that we're doing a lot with enterprises. We have grown those programs, and we might be able to grow the community programs a bit more, but we've got to do some study on that. But it's not going to come out to be the kind of money that is already budgeted for the current, for the upcoming fiscal 2026 year. We've got over $1.2 million anticipated into the budget coming from community programs. I don't see us being able to double that. And certainly, even if we were able to double that, it's not going to come close to the kind of funding that we will need to keep things as they are. The money, I just don't see it there. And we don't know what the state will enable us to do in terms of tax levy. You know, we, we don't like the situation that we found ourselves in. We didn't like it last year, was horrible, horrible again this year. This is no, no comfort, but we're not alone. There are hundreds of school districts throughout the state experiencing trials like this and worse. Old Bridge, I just heard this yesterday or today, Old Bridge is looking at an increase in taxes of, I think it was 20, $22 million?
About that.
$22 million?
Yes.
And if it's not approved, high school will go to half-day sessions.
They asked for a loan from the state and the state said no.
No, the state's not going to give loans. You know, we've got school districts in the state that are closing multiple schools because they can't maintain them and collapsing staff. East Brunswick, we're, I hate to say it, but we're not in the worst situation. We feel like we are because we want to retain what we have. But we are not the only ones. It doesn't help to know that we're the only, we're not the only ones, but this is a statewide problem, a statewide problem. There have been districts that have received enormous amounts of additional state aid, and they don't know what to do with it, looking for ways to spend it, and you can't put it in a savings account. So I don't know what the answer is going forward, but we've been watching this, we've been trying to plan for things. It's, there aren't a lot of options. There just aren't a lot of options.
One of the things I wanted to say is, early on in this process, we, and if you are here and listen to the meetings, we talked about our facilities, we talked about Bound Monroe. And this wasn't a baited switch. We've had this conversation about Bound for a number of years, but you are seeing across the state districts who are selling properties. They are closing schools and selling them. That is a one-time fix, and we have to figure out something that can be a recurring revenue source. And that's why we talked about if Bound became an alternate enterprise revenue source for the district, could we maintain and grow that as an additional resource for the district that would help to supplement the general fund? So those conversations continue to, to be ongoing, and I think we need to explore that vigorously as we approach the next school year because those kinds of things seem to be the only things that we have in our toolkit right now that we can tap into to generate this additional revenue. And as Mr. Giuliani said, we've been very good about providing services to the community that they desire and they're willing to pay for. The utilization of the JM PAC has been tremendous, you know, and if, at some point in the future, if this district ever, ever got to a point where they would approve a referendum for, maybe not even a high school, but maybe a performing arts center attached to the high school, those are the kind of facilities that are in constant demand and generate revenue, and that, you know, that, that's an investment, though, and that's, that's an investment for the future. And I know something a lot of people don't want to think about right now because of the enormous costs associated with it. And here we are in this situation with the cost of materials. We have no idea what the next year will look like in terms of what would constructing a facility look like compared to what it would have been, you know, even six or eight months ago. So those are the kinds of things that, that we will continue to look at as we plan and prepare for next year already.
If I may, I'd like to add something to that also because as we, you know, as you've listened to what's come from the state and the governor and in terms of preschool programs and, you know, pushing to institute preschool programs in schools, in school districts, that's essentially our early learning academy. It's a revenue producer. If by some chance the state pushes and succeeds with that, the revenue that goes to offset the budget is gone, and the amount of state aid that will come from those students won't even come close to being able to make up that difference. So that is a concern for me as I think about the kinds of things that may happen down the road.
Well, there, there are concerns among superintendents and middlesex about those kinds of programs where state aid is allocated and then it's essentially pulled back year after year, and, and that burden is shifted to the local taxpayers, and now it becomes the East Brunswick problem, not a state problem.
All right. So what I'm going to do is, I did have one more comment, and I'm just going to start from one side and work around for the board before I go to public comment. But I did want to thank Mr. Giuliani and his team and the entire administrative team for this budget cycle. I know that having the committee of the whole and doing the budget in public is arduous and awkward. I also appreciate the public putting up with not being able to see all the papers and yet being here through it. But it was a different process for us. I'm hoping it gave some more transparency or at least some clarity about how difficult the process is. I also wanted to thank the team for going back when the board said we had consensus that we wanted to go in a different direction. My only other thought is that people have commented to me quite a bit that we should start planning sooner for the next year, which I understand is everybody's gut responding. I'm a mom, and we tell people, you know, when things don't go well, you should have started planning sooner. I say that a lot. But we started right now, but we also know we have this much money, and we know pretty much what the expenses will be without rises in costs. And planning ahead for something that we know we won't be able to afford is still difficult, especially when we can't save. So I appreciate your efforts in this, and I feel we've already started on next year, which is exhausting.
Yes, we have.
We have. All right. We're going to start this way and work around. Dr. Braun, Ms. Herrick, Tim?
Quick question. The projected class size averages for K through 4, which those numbers I think are probably pretty consistent with what we've seen over the past five to 10 years, I hope. What about beyond that, you know, when the grades that aren't listed on this sheet? Do we have any concerns about the size of classes as kids kind of age through our district?
Class sizes are going to increase in the upper grades.
Right.
That is a discussion that we've had through the budget process. Some of the reductions that were reflected in the tentative budget also go in that direction. So they're not going to be class sizes like we're seeing in the K-4 realm. That's just, it's impossible. What that will mean for the future, I don't have that crystal ball. I don't know. I think a lot of that's going to be driven by state aid. You can't hold your breath on that. You know, we already know, based on what they've said this year, that we can look for another reduction of 3%. So that's what we have to plan for. $3 million in tax levy, if we have adjustments, that's still not going to make up. So there's a lot to be looked at. I don't know if I'm answering your question quite directly, but I, you know, there's no crystal ball for this. We're going to have to monitor as we're going along and see what, what are our options? How can we try to manage? Looking at the schedules, you know, we've enlisted each of the principals to really closely look at schedules and manage them, and they've been also reviewed centrally to help work at, you know, what might those look like for the next year? So there's just a lot of work to be done on that to try and, and manage and control what those sizes would be.
One of the, one of the things that Mr. Cummings is that we, we centralized registration here in this building, so we get to see daily what that looks like as people come into the district to register their, their families or children. And on any given day, there, there can be a day when Janet and Karen and the registration team are literally running all day long because people are just coming in. They have just moved here, they have just, this is, this is what, what they're doing right away to get their children in school. And those, those blips and anomalies then translate into real people in classrooms in a building. So we, we see these little shifts, you know, that go throughout the year. And of course, there are people that migrate out as well. So there, you know, I'm not going to, I'm not trying to paint a picture of everybody's just coming in, but those things do translate into dynamic changes in classrooms throughout the school year and even late into the year. It's amazing to watch because we get to see it firsthand. But we are trying really hard, and it's been the board's priority, to maintain lower class sizes, especially K-3. But, you know, that, as Mr. Giuliani said, that, that won't be sustainable because you have to have more staff to spread those students out. And so if that is, if you're constraining the amount of staff that you're hiring or, you know, having to collapse that at some point in time, that's going to have an impact.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I totally get that it's this, the, the long-term projection here is grim. I just wanted to make sure that for the upcoming academic year, the fiscal year that we're embarking in right now, that we feel comfortable with all projected class sizes, you know, from 5 through 12 as well. So if...
At this moment in time, I feel comfortable with that. At this moment in time, I feel comfortable with that. But we will continue to analyze that as we finish up this school year and especially through the summer because that, that tends to be a very dynamic time for people to register as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Hall?
So thank you, Mr. Giuliani, for this, a lot of information. But this package has 44 slides. So I hope, really hope next time, please give this package to us earlier so we don't have time to digest it. It's a lot of information and it was just given us a few minutes ago, so it's too much, at least for me. I don't know how much for you guys. So would you please go to the slide number 44, the last one?
Mr. Hall, could I, could I explain something in defense of Mr. Giuliani?
Sure, please.
So we, you know, this, there's a lot of information here and not, not everything is, is easily explainable. And we were spending, Mr. Giuliani spent a lot of time putting this together and we went through and kind of quality controlled it to make sure that we could present a picture to the public that was understandable tonight in this presentation. So I apologize for that, but that did take a lot of time to prepare this and get this ready.
I, I understand this is a very big job to get organized, so much information. But my concern is, as board member, we need a little bit more time to start to digest the information that will help us to prepare the meeting well. But I, I know you guys are working hard. I understand this is a very big project, but this is my comment. Okay. For the last slides. So I anticipate next year will be a lot worse than you anticipate. So for a few reasons. Number one, almost everyone agrees that we will face another 3% reduction, which equals to $1.12 million.
Yes.
But this year charter school got 11% increase. I anticipate next year they will got similar or even more increase, which means the money for us to spend will be more, less than 1.12, maybe close to $2 or $3 million. So please get ready.
Sure. When you, when you take out the, the charter school component, which we don't know what that will be, but I agree. We just saw 600, over $650,000 increase. So yes, that will be an impact for next year as well.
And second, I, I anticipate the inflation will off run 2%, which will increase the cost for everything. So that will make the gap even bigger. But, so you mentioned that we'll reduction program and service. So I really hope you guys, you know, after we have this budget for next year, you guys should work on, number one, we need, really need to think about the rest district.
Yes.
We really should do it. We have been, if my memory is accurate, we talked about this more than 10 years. We need to do it to improve the transportation efficiency, to improve efficiency of facility and teaching. And second, if, if we have to cut, please retain our teachers. They are the backbone of this school district. They are the future of our school district. This is our children's, this is our children's future. With that, most people move to this school district is for school. If we don't have good teachers, I, I don't know. You know, by chance I reviewed last year, previous year's testing result. I realized that our testing score, our ranking is drifting down. So I'm really worried. So for the, we have the excellence in academic. We need keeping, we need building, we need improving. By that, by doing that, we'll keep our property tax, keep our property more valuable. We're attracting more people to our town and we provide our children more bright future. So that is the thing that I want to keep in mind. And it's for additionally, technology can improve the efficiency, to improve the administrator's efficiency. We need try our best to utilize more technology to help us to improve the efficiency. And it's for the community, I, please keep lobbying. I, I understand it's very difficult for the state to change the funding formula, but the more lobbying job we do, the, the bigger chance we will get better treatment. That's, I urge you guys, take any opportunity, talk to the legislatures. Because current founding formula is 15 years old. It's kind of out of date and it's, it's a lot of problem with that. We, we need to try to improve it. How, when, I need your help. So everyone in this community, please try your best to do it. But again, I want to thank you, Mr. Giuliani and Dr. Valesky for this, this job. It take you a lot of effort. Thank you.
Mr. Giuliani, could you give a brief update of where we are in the redistricting process? Because the board approved that.
Yes. So the demographer was here last week.
Last week.
Was here for two days. He wanted to visit the eight elementary schools, also visited Hammershould and Churchill. Wanted to actually get eyes on what those facilities were like, how they were running. He has, in fact, we have a meeting scheduled for him to give us an update. I think it's May 21st. We have a meeting with him to get an update on his status. He's requested additional information, looking at the registrations, the early registrations for kindergarten so that he can include those in projections. So I know they've been working. They're going to give us an update on the 21st and we will see what their timeframes are for getting us the, ultimately making a report to the board.
Thank you.
James?
Well, LeWu stole everything I had to say, so I'm just going to say ditto. I believe that cutting expenses that do not include personnel, we have to absolutely prioritize our educators so that our children have their best experience. Looking forward to the future, making sure that we have consolidation in our services and facilities to reduce costs. If we can't increase our revenue is really the only way to fight back. And I will be in Trenton next week. There is a budget meeting with the Senate, I believe, on the 13th. And I hope that those of you who can come out, join us. They're also available on Zoom. You can find this information online, the Department of Education and the state's websites. And I think that those resources are fairly public, but if not, I would love to work with the board to figure out a way to empower you guys to have this better information so we can work collaboratively to make our voices heard in Trenton. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like us to come back to you in a moment? Okay. Lu?
Thank you, President Goss. I want to start out by saying, Mr. Giuliani, thank you for your presentation. I also want to echo the words of President Goss before and thank Mr. Giuliani, his team, Dr. Valesky, the entire administration, including school administrators. I know everybody took a lot of time to put this together. I'm very satisfied, especially that you were able to find the money for the ban on orchestra, which was not something that was, was going to be funded by the state. So thank you. Thank you for the time and effort there. I do think that for the future, if it's possible, that maybe we reconsider the committee of the whole for the budgeting, just because we can maybe get into the, you know, certain things a little bit better and then present it to the public in a different manner. It was, I'm sure it was painful for the public to hear the process because they really couldn't tell what we were talking about. So that's just a consideration that maybe we can discuss at some other date if there's a better way of doing that. So that's something to consider. I just want, if I could, if someone could just give me an idea. It says here under restructure, restructure therapeutic mental health services. Can someone just give me a little more detail in what that really means? I know we talked about this before, several meetings ago. I just want to make sure the public understands what that is.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Figaro. So that, that is, we were using an outside vendor and we were, now we're converting to actually utilizing our own staff to be able to provide a greater width of service based on the utilization of our own staff members. So essentially it's building out our own system of support with our own staff.
So it includes new positions.
Yes.
Specifically for this purpose. So I believe it's three student assistance specialists that will do just this, provide therapeutic mental health services. And the net was a savings to the budget.
So would it be fair to say that in the past we used an outside organization or that we may not have had as much control over in terms of students saw, that they can see and that now there's a little bit better having it in-house with our administration overseeing it and our own people working with our kids on a regular daily basis? I think it's so, so what I'm, I'm hearing is that not only did we save money, but we might have improved the program. Thank you. Thank you very much. Job well done.
All right. I only want to add to that in that the trying the committee of the whole was very directly a response to the public's concern that the original, or the primary stages of the budget was done behind closed doors. And that is very difficult for the public. I heard repeatedly throughout the community and in our meetings as well that people didn't understand. There were just things happening in meetings that they did not see or hear and then out came this budget that they didn't know where it came from. There were parts in this process that I missed from where it was in a committee. You know, we used to have more contact with each department head as they came through and went through each stage of the budget. But I, I hope that this was at least an attempt to be responsive to what people were asking for to see what this process is every step of the way. It was ungainly this year. I'm not entirely sure how to make it smoother to keep it in the public as a committee of the whole, but we were trying to be responsive.
May I comment on that?
Sure.
I just want to say I do appreciate that and I think the public appreciated it as well, I'm sure. I just think that the process itself, as you say, was somewhat ungainly at times. And when they had to sit through us going through line items that they had no idea was. I'm just hoping there's a better way. Not exactly sure what it is, but I think it might be something for discussion in the future.
Absolutely.
Thank you again, President Goss.
We're always looking to improve it and this was the first time, but we were trying to put more of it out here. I will tell you that even when it's in the back, it really is, I mean, you know, but it really is that just ungainly, one line at a time. I did want to say to, I'm just giving you a little time there, Mr. Pan, or Dr. Pan. I did want to say to LeWu that I was thinking while we were going through the slides, it was a lot of slides, but then I started looking and I'd say in the first, I don't know, easily 30-some slides, it was, I think, a very nice consolidated recap for the public, like bringing it all together, like this is where we're at. Because there were pages, I don't remember these being in other presentations at this point, but pages of things that were eliminated and then able to be brought back and, and every step along the way. So I appreciated that information being in here. All right. Dr. Pan, do you have any comments at this time?
So first of all, apologies for being late. Orchestra concert. I'm going to sort of mentally fill in the gaps in terms of how the discussion has been going, but I just really wanted to make two points. And I'm hoping I'm not repeating things that were already said. But number one, something that has always been super important to me is communication in terms of what the school district is doing and what the Board of Education is doing. I remember going all the way back to January when we first found out the impact that, that this year's budget was going, was going to look like. One of the very first comments that we made was, when are we telling people? Because I remember the process last year and I, and maybe I got the details wrong, but my recollection is that the announcement of the budget shortfall last year came much later on in the calendar year compared to what happened this year. And, and I, I don't really like to make a big deal of my day job, but one of the things that I have picked up over the years, being a pediatric oncologist, is I've learned how to give bad news to people. And people need time to process the bad news. And this was bad news this year, it was bad news last year. No one was going to be happy with the news. I knew that. But what I thought we could do is give people time to process and help work out the best possible solution. And I'm glad that we did that. And in terms of the committee of the whole, I actually am in favor of that, for what it's, for what it's worth. I mean, you know, it, it is a bit unwieldy working these things out in public. But I also think that this broadens the conversation and it provides a mechanism for input that would be more difficult if we went back to a finance committee system where the finance committee meets and then, and then, you know, there's a report made out to the entire board. And then there, and what really happens is that there's two levels of, of discussion there, which is not probably the most efficient use of time, especially since my prediction is next year we will be exactly in the same position as we are this year. Another seven and a half million, the whole. Why do I think this? I'm not that great at predicting things, otherwise I'd be, you know, I would have bought a lotto ticket before I came over here tonight. But the reason I can predict this is that we can look around the state to similar school districts in terms of what's going on with financing there. And if anyone wants to know what our future is, I think it's South Brunswick. South Brunswick is in their fifth or sixth year of multimillion dollar budget shortfalls, many of which have been as large as ours. And, you know, I've been eyeballing the South Brunswick Board of Ed meetings just because I wanted to see how things are done there because they've been facing the same situation. And this is kind of their mindset at this point. Scott Federer, the superintendent of South Brunswick, made the comment of, oh, at least our shortfall is only about a million this year. That was good news to them. That's what they've been dealing with for the last half decade. That's our future. So again, the, you know, lots of ideas come in, but I think effort needs to be made to find out what's the root cause of this issue. I have thoughts. I know I've spoken about that before. I have no illusion that I've solved everything. But I think it's, but I, what I have been able to do over the past few months is pressure test my ideas with a lot of different people. And I've yet to run across anyone that's told me that I was wrong about where I'm at. I could be. I'm not saying that proves anything. But what I do think this needs is the efforts of everyone in town to fix this problem because this is our problem. And if we're not going to help fix our problem, then we're just sort of like passing that off to someone else. And that's not something I've ever been, you know, in, in, in favor of. We can talk about, more about this later because this is a conversation that needs to keep going. And as far as I'm concerned, the next time we should discuss this is at our next Board of Ed meeting because it's going to take time and planning to try to manage this situation. The second thing I just want to mention is that from looking at the, you know, the results of the budgets, I actually do think it reflects the values that our community has. Despite an often stated opinion, we do get and read every single email that comes in. At least I can say that's true for myself. I'm sure it's true for everybody up here. So if anyone's saying, well, I sent an email and it, and it doesn't, you know, get read, that's absolutely untrue. And, and I'm happy to talk about this with anybody that thinks that the truth, you know, the truth is otherwise. But looking at all the input that has come in, I actually, again, do think that where we landed was a good reflection of our town's values, which I'm very happy to see that our town values excellence in education because that's an important thing for us because that's why East Brunswick is East Brunswick. You know, that's why we moved to town, how long ago? 21 years ago. I've also learned that it doesn't matter how long I've lived in East Brunswick, everybody else has lived here longer than me. But, but that's why people move here. That's why people continue to move here, even to this day. Talk to real estate agents around town, they'll tell you exactly the same thing. And that's what makes our town our town. And I think where we landed with the budget this year. And I think where we landed with the budget this year reflects that. And I think that's a success in terms of the way that we as a group approached this issue this year. And I'm going to make the statement, I think the transparency was there and the communication was there. It's a difficult situation. It's going to be more difficult next year. The one good thing, I suppose, about watching how South Brunswick has managed this, about three years into their year after year after year budget shortfall, there are about five people in the audience. But that's because the school district there established trust that they could handle the situation. And as far as I'm concerned, that's one of my goals this year and next year. So thanks. Hope I didn't repeat anything.
No, I think we're in agreement on many things that that's all of our goals. I do want to add, though, that South Brunswick is very different from us because they have a declining enrollment and we have an increasing enrollment. So we are a different situation from them in some ways that are going to be tricky. All right, at this point, I'm going to open it up for public comment on the budget hearing and the budget hearing only at this time. Is there a time limit to this?
Yes.
All right. It's still still same rules. It's three minutes. If you could state your name and address unless you're a student, and then it's just your name and school. The board secretary will keep the time. And again, this is only about the budget hearing. Ben?
So just to clarify, after this, we'll have an opportunity later to speak.
There is still the good of the cause for the public.
Okay, okay. Good evening. Dom Sclafani, Six Fairfield Road. So you talked about revenue opportunities. I I think it's it's a, I I kind of think it's mind blowing how we haven't done sponsorship yet on like football fields, basketball, whatever. And a lot of people have said like it, they feel East Brunswick may be too good for that. Well, that's that's money. That's that's free money that companies will give you to just hang a banner up at the at the football field. So, you know, I'm not saying that's that's going to get millions or whatever, but that's that's revenue. I would also like to expand on what Mr. Mr. Hong said, retain teachers and retain programs if possible. Try to try to do do the thing that will impact students the least. Because that that's that's what school is. School is for the kids. It's not for the administrators. It's not it's not about that. It's for the kids, you know, have experiences and all that stuff. So that's just my my thing. Get those sponsorships for all the sports. You can even, I'm not a fan of it, but put sponsorships on jerseys for the teams, you know? But thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Anyone else?
Jeff Winston, forty-four Fresh Pond Road, East Brunswick. Mr. Juliana, you did a great job again. I appreciate the information. Having chaired this committee once before, I do know the difficulty in bringing it. I want to add a piece that again is missing and has been missing in every single budget delivery that I've had the privilege to watch. It's already been mentioned. And while you don't have a crystal ball, I agree with, what you do have is a history book. And in that history book, there's been opportunities now that raise this question. I'll start with the first. I've listened to you use the excuse of the charter schools year after year after year after year. I could best guess about three hundred and eighteen students go there that are from East Brunswick. We estimate the cost of education here, last I looked, if I'm off by a little bit, that's fine, of twenty-two thousand five hundred. That would be seven point one five five million. I think we're giving them a little less than that. So in my world, that's a bargain. If we were to bring the three hundred and eighteen students back in, there would be no talk of Bound being closed down because you're going to need the space. So you're actually saving money by that charter school, and I'd like you to stop using that as an excuse. Next, when you talk about revenue and revenue driving, I understand that and I know revenues have been tough since COVID and we're trying to get those money, that money back. What does concern me is the size loans that you're taking on in the debt service. You mentioned roughly half a million dollars. This time, you just recently got approval after some type of clandestine meeting that took place between Dr. Valeski and a couple of council members. But eleven and a half million dollars coming in, you're going to be adding to debt service, it looks like. I know there's some retiring. Regardless, debt service is is going to be a big thing if your revenues, as you just said, we can't double your revenue. So how are you going to pay for your loans? Next, when it comes to that eleven and a half million dollars, you, there was a question, we don't know what we can do to save money. Well, here's one. Don't spend twenty-eight thousand dollars to remove a backstop with machinery. Don't start replacing scoreboards right now and don't start replacing turf fields or P A. systems. And and again, if you're going to be spending money in in all of these things, it's a little difficult to to square up everything you just said. Lastly, Dr. Valeski, I wish you well in your future endeavors, but we're going to have to clean up a big mess that you left behind, and they're called trailers at Churchill. There will be no high school. We spent a fortune on those trailers. And I'd like to see a cost analysis done by this board to unwind the disaster of Hughes since there will be no high school. Get the kids back in the proper grades where they were before. There is no evolution of a high school. It was a brainchild that never took off and is over seven years old that I'm aware of. So until I started hearing about cost savings, it's very, very difficult to hear any board say, this is what happened to us and we don't know what we're going to do. If you can creatively come up ways to start working now to cost cut your costs, you have to really wonder what you are doing in these seats. It is your job to make sure the district runs well. And we'll have a new superintendent so you can see that it does just that. Thank you very much.
Hi, Dan Moran. I'm supervisor of social studies for East Brunswick Schools. Hi, everybody. I've worked in East Brunswick for thirty-two years as a teacher, department chair and supervisor. And the single biggest thing I learned at East Brunswick is that great districts don't just happen, like they get made. And even the current crisis, you're all trying to figure out is an example of that. Like, none of you are just hoping that it just works itself out. Like, you're all trying to make this thing work out for us so it doesn't just happen. And like the students, teachers and principals, part of what makes East Brunswick happen is its team of supervisors. People have a pretty good idea of what teachers and principals do, but their knowledge of supervisors might be a little fuzzy. They kind of think like, well, they supervise. But what does that really mean? So I just wanted to talk about that for a second. Supervisors are the go-to people for hundreds of teachers all day, every day. And yes, we write a lot of formal evaluations, we do summaries and things like that, but supervisors do a lot behind the scenes that's not recorded on paper and that directly affects the quality of instruction that the kids receive here. East Brunswick supervisors don't stay in their offices. We work with our teachers every day. We are routinely walking into classrooms to see how our students are doing. And all of these formal and informal classroom visits help maintain a series of conversations that leads to the excellence of this district. Now, when I was a teacher here, I just took that level of excellence for granted. I just thought that's that's how it is. But I didn't realize until I I started working in administration that that there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes to make that happen, as you all know. So supervisors work on assessments, they work on aligning grading practices, they provide quality professional development. We help teachers when they're having a rough patch in their practices or their lives. Our supervisors are former teachers and content specialists whose guidance moves, they move whole departments forward and we help to move schools forward in the right direction as well. Because none of us want this to become an education factory, like we want to do the right thing all the time. And East Brunswick is a large district and removing supervisors will not remove the demands of those jobs. And I know that, just to conclude, all of you are making really hard decisions. I do not envy any of you for this at all. And I know that everyone on the board, I know that Dr. Valeski, I know that the central office team, you're all working as hard as you can to kind of make this thing happen and to make it work out. And I just wanted to put back in everyone's radar what supervisors do in case this comes up again next year like we're hearing about, if we have to make these kind of cuts again. So thank you and good luck. Thanks.
Thank you.
Tatiana Jordan, twenty-seven North Drive. Tatiana Jordan, twenty-seven North Drive. I'm glad to hear you feel comfortable with the current class sizes, but as a parent, I have concerns. While you share the average numbers, you don't provide a breakdown by school, which leaves out important contexts. The average of eighteen students in kindergarten, for example, includes smaller schools like Bamm and Rowan Irwin, but doesn't reflect the reality at larger schools like Lawrence Brook, where class sizes have significantly and consistently exceeded the average. Last year, there were twenty-four students in a kindergarten class, and this year's first grade classes all have twenty students each, only after parents advocated, myself included, for additional section to be opened. You stated at a previous meeting that a section of first grade at Lawrence Brook will be cut next year, pushing four sections of kindergarten into three sections, starting at twenty-one students, which also doesn't account for any potential new move-ins. So I hope you'll understand why I'm skeptical of the numbers being presented and the way they're selectively framed for public reassurance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Good evening. Anthony Gugliotta, I am the K six math supervisor and the president of the EBPSA. I would like to ask the board to once again reconsider the proposed cuts to the four academic supervisors for the upcoming school year. In an organization the size of our district, each group has a role and a part to play in the day-to-day and year-to-year operations of our eleven buildings. Some are clearly understood. For example, students learn and teachers teach, but other roles such as district supervisors are less clear. Simply put, supervisors help support the teachers and programs throughout the district. By removing vital support for our teachers and students through the elimination of these four supervisory positions, this will surely have adverse effects on the district's ability to meet the curricular goals and successes that we have all become accustomed to in East Brunswick. I came to the district in two thousand and six as the eight twelve math department chair and worked alongside Dr. Moran, who had the same role in I L. A. We both worked with the K twelve curriculum supervisors in each of our areas, and there were similar models in social studies and science. During my time in the district, I have learned to appreciate having a colleague for program coordination and how important this was to supporting staff across all eleven buildings. And although this model has changed in two thousand and six, the theme of having eight supervisors support the K twelve academic teachers and programs has remained in place. This has served us well with tasks such as performing classroom observations, setting up student tutoring, and running teacher workshops that focus on grade-level appropriate curriculum and pedagogy. And this brings us to our main concern, cutting four academic supervisors is going to affect how often and how well we can support staff across the district. And please keep in mind the varied academic needs across our programs. The K six curriculum focuses on focuses on foundational skills that are vital for success as students enter and move through elementary school, while the seven twelve curriculum focuses on skills that will carry students first into high school and then to their post-high school experience. And underpinning both programs is educational technology such as A I. Whereas previously mentioned, East Brunswick has emerged as a leader among schools in New Jersey. This great potential offered here will also be adversely affected by the proposed supervisor cuts and will move East Brunswick out of its role as a trailblazer and early pioneer in this area. So with all this in mind, which grade levels and teachers deserve more attention and support? Is math more important than science? What about I L. A. and social studies? Do we focus more on the accurate place or on A P. scores? Simply put, cutting academic supervisors for these programs will force us to make difficult decisions about where we're providing teacher support at the K twelve level because we will have the same number of teacher and academic program needs with half the support. Please take this under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the board?
Apologies for the baby. He went to bed. Heather James Zuckerman, five twenty-seven Old Bridge Turnpike. So thank you for all your work on this difficult budget. I know how hard it truly was and to do it all in public for the first time was not easy. Knowing now, after two years of experience, what's in the state funding formula and the factors that really deeply impact the formula, there should be much more predictability for next year. And we can and should use that to our advantage. Obviously, state funding levels can change depending on revenue, et cetera. But I hope that you can all walk into the back room this summer and say, okay, here's our estimate based on our calculation, the formula, and let's think about where we can trim. I know you have the skill set, Mr. Juliana, I've seen it, and you have the awards to prove it. So I think the next fiscal year cannot be business as usual. I think part of what drives the lack of public trust here is the cycle that we've been stuck in for the last two years. It is business as usual, and then all of a sudden in February, it's panic time, right? So, Dr. Pan, you mentioned that what was saved reflects the desires of the community, and I would agree. However, with all due respect, if one of the goals is to reflect the will of the community, why were the music programs and Hughes so disproportionately impacted in the initial budget proposal? There was an uproar last budget cycle because of the potential cuts to the music program. We literally took what happened a year ago and duplicated it. And so I hope that we can think more holistically throughout the whole fiscal year, how we can avoid that sort of, look over here, now we're in a crisis, we'll save two programs, and, you know, now we have to think of new solutions for next year. I'm very glad, though, that the redistricting study is moving along. The parent who said she's worried about class sizes at Lawrence Brook deeply reflects the long-awaited need to redistrict, and hopefully that will help us with some of the fiscal problems as well. But I would encourage you not to just think everything's fine until we get to the start of two thousand and twenty-six. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I'm going to close the public hearing on the budget, which moves us on to the public hearing on the student safety data system.
Yes. Sorry, President Gloss. Yes. Wait just a second here. Sorry, we're just going to gear up here just so we can have the presentation on the screen.
Let's go next. About by three.
There we go. So this is our presentation for the school's safety data system. The data reported for September of twenty-four to December of twenty-four. So obviously, this is a look back. And if we can go to the, this is a summary of incidents related to the elementary schools, including Hammershold Upper Elementary. But let me give you, as we're looking at these screens, an explanation of what you're looking at. So if you're looking at the incident total column, that is the total of violence, vandalism, substances, weapons, and confirmed H I Bs. Now, there could be multiple incidents or multiple offenses within the incident, so sometimes the numbers may not jive, but in most cases they will. Under the violence column, those are mandatory reports of assault, fights, kidnapping, robbery or extortion, sexual assault, sexual contact, simple threats and criminal threats. Under the vandalism column, that includes arson, computer trespass, damage to property, false public alarm, and that could include, you know, intentionally dialing nine-one-one, theft and trespass. And then the H I B. alleged, those are H I Bs that are opened up that are unfounded. So the one I would, the column I would like to draw the the audience's attention to, other incidents leading to removal. So I'm just going to give you the description. This is any incident that does not meet the S S D. S. Incident Type Definitions that they've established for violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation or bullying, weapons, offenses, substance abuses that result in a disciplinary removal for at least one half of a day. So if we've taken a student out of school for at least one half a day, we have to report it. And those disciplinary removals are defined as any instance in which child is removed from his or her educational setting for any disciplinary purpose, including in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, expulsion or removal to another educational setting. So as we move on, if we could move to the, this is now the secondary schools. Another recap, but I think the most telling for this report will be the comparison year to year. We are very happy to report that we have seen a decrease in the total incidents, moving from sixty-three to forty-seven year to year. We have been relatively consistent in our violence category. We had an uptick in vandalism. We had an uptick in vandalism, and we are continuing to see vandalism in our schools. And in fact, we had a recent rash of vandalism at Hammerhill that we are addressing. We have seen a decrease in reported substance abuse on school property. That is... Moving that needle has been very hard to do, and we're very happy with the work that's been done there. I do want to bring your attention to weapons. And we... This year, or at least in this reporting period, we had two weapons. These are both knives that were manufactured on 3D printers. So they are... While they are scientifically made of a plastic material, they are exact replicas of knives, and they are extremely dangerous as well, and we treat them as weapons. But the accessibility of the template and the actual ability to print these is available online throughout the internet. We have, in terms of HIV confirmed, we have seen a reduction there. But what we are looking at is the other incidents leading to removal. And this is a concern because we have seen an uptick in this category. We are seeing students with repeated instances of insubordination, being at levels of disrespect to staff that we have not seen before. Blatant disrespect, use of profanity. So those things, and we're looking at the data in terms of the actual subsets of students that are in these categories, to try to bring resources to those students and look at interventions to correct and mitigate those kinds of circumstances. Overall, in terms of the next slide, this is just a comparison of our HIVs, those alleged that are unfounded, and of course, on the right, the ones that are confirmed. We take every HIV seriously. We investigate them fully, and we make sure that we provide appropriate remediations after the conclusion of that investigation. We have had difficult conversations with parents about the outcomes of HIV. Some do not meet the criteria but are certainly codes of conduct, and we're trying to be very, very clear with parents about the distinguishing characteristics between an HIV and a code of conduct situation. And finally, on the last slide, certainly, this is not new to the community of East Brunswick. We've brought, you know, and it wasn't me, but the staff has brought, sources of strength, peer, and adult mentoring programs, probably our biggest program that has a direct impact on students. And you heard tonight in my superintendent's report about the butterfly effect and about bringing students together to talk about positive experiences and how that small impact has a greater impact over time. So we're looking at things like that. And of course, we continue to have, you know, things that violence awareness and respect week activities to bring awareness to all of these situations. We continue to have a dynamic population of students who are encountering social experiences outside of school. We continue to get a number of handle with care from the police department. We are notified throughout the night, on the weekends, if the police encounter a student that we have to be aware that there's some kind of situation outside of school that could impact their learning or their experience at school. Those come throughout every night and every weekend. They are consistent this year. So I am really proud of the staff that works very hard to make all of this happen. I have to recognize Karen Keegan, who is sitting, I think, right back there. Raise your hand high, Karen. Karen put the report together. She manages everything. She makes sure. She's the gatekeeper back there, and I've come to understand that she doesn't have a problem saying no to anybody. Daniel Blaylock, of course, Vanessa Amatero... Amatero, and the... Yes. And the entire... And the entire student assistance and counseling staff. They're a phenomenal group of people who work very hard and care very much about every student they encounter. So kudos to them. We are moving the needle in the right direction. There is a lot of work to do, and we continue to hope to have... Each successive report shows improvement. So that concludes the report.
Mary?
Question?
Oh, do we do comment times? Yeah. We can do questions, yeah.
Okay. Just a quick question. With the categories, violence, vandalism, et cetera, how are these categories chosen? Is this like a state mandate that these are the categories that shall be used?
It is.
Okay. So is... And given the comments that you made about the other incidents, is there room for us to look at, say, insubordination specifically and call it out, given that this is a trend that we've identified at our level? Or is that something that the state mandate is hamstringing us on?
Dr. Pan, no. They... Well, the state category is defined by the state, but we are running reports behind the scenes that the principals keep in terms of like Google Forms and Google Sheets to keep and track the demographics of all those kinds of reports as well.
Okay.
So we have the detail behind the scenes to support these numbers, which are reported at a state level using the state category that they have set. So we have a more refined look at the students behind this right here.
Got it. Okay. Maybe next time, if there's something that you wanted to call out, such as the insubordination thing.
We can do that. We can show that as part of the presentation.
That would be helpful, I think. Thanks.
Dr. Figaro?
Yes. Thank you for the report, Dr. Valeski. With the confirmed HIVs, is there any trends that you see in there or that we've identified? For instance, are they more on the bus? Are they in the lunchroom or in the hallways? And if so, is there anything that we can do about it? Have we tried to, you know, make any change in those?
We have. So we do have, through a program we use called Hipster, we have the ability to actually identify where the incident occurs and draw trends and do reports on those. We have seen pretty much across the board, student-to-student interaction in hallways and passing. We have had some cases on buses. So those tend to be cafeteria, hallways, buses, where there's common gathering of students or common mixing of students. So we are fortunate that we have cameras on all of our buses, so that is a forensic opportunity for us. Hallways are monitored as well and cafeterias. Our security system, without revealing all the details, is really comprehensive, and it gives us a lot of ability to investigate and kind of really drill down into who the targets are and who the aggressors are in these HIV cases. But you know from your work, Dr. Figaro, when you were handling this, is that it is the... It is the... I guess the big lift is providing the resources to students to get them to change a behavior, and that's the biggest, biggest challenge. In many cases, what we have seen in some of the less aggressive HIVs, but they're still HIVs, the students really don't understand or comprehend what they have done to a classmate or to a peer. They didn't think it was bullying, but it is. And so having that understanding is a learning experience for them for the next year, the next grade level, and that's our challenge.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski. Appreciate that. Thank you again for the report.
Anyone else? Lori?
Thank you for the report and for everybody in administration who works on this. Two questions. One, do you see any of this affected by cellphone use throughout the day? Like videotaping of students or anything related to that, cellphone use?
We have... Obviously, students use their digital devices in inappropriate ways during the day. We have policies, and part of our code of conduct is that not to use a phone to record an incident. We have, in fact, you know, I would say many times, we're able to recover the video from a phone. But the problem is, Mrs. Herrick, is that, as you know, that the ability of a student to record an event and to upload that event real-time to social media is... And I've watched video of a student who did it, and I was actually amazed that they're able to take their phone, one-handed, take a video, upload the photographs of the video, and it's literally in seconds.
Yeah.
You know? And so... But it's a behavior that... And the consequences are real. So the principals have been consistent in administering those consequences in this code of conduct. So we might have a... We might have a situation where it's an HIV incident involving students or groups of students, but we have a student who recorded it. And of course, now they're in the code of conduct arena.
Right.
And then having to... But I think sometimes the students are beginning to understand that that's real. You know, I don't want to be sent out of school because I just had this desire to record a fight.
Right.
But other times, there's an intentionality about it. It's like, there's... It's planned. They want to record it. They want to get it uploaded. And that's working hard and trying to change that behavior, but that is the world that we are fighting against, is that this immediate, everybody's going to pull out their phone and take that video.
Yeah. Thank you. And then just my other question, looking at some of the categories here, we know that some of this can be caused or affected by mental health or mental health challenges.
Right.
And so we've heard recently from the federal government that there is expected to be cuts in mental health services provided to schools. And do you have any thoughts or aspects on how that might look here for us? How much funding we or the state as a whole gets from that? I know that the state has kind of said that they are willing and will go after, like legally pursue money, but that there's a lot of things being cut that the state doesn't have the money for.
Right.
So how do you think that might play into this?
I think you're absolutely right. I think we have not seen yet what the impact is going to be about the changes at the federal level in terms of money coming down to the state. You know, at this moment, we are not making any assumptions until we see real impacts or cuts. But as was discussed earlier in the budget presentation, bringing mental health support back in-house with students and providing a greater capacity of our staff to service more students with the consistency of our own staff. And one of the things we saw with the vendor relationship is if we didn't have a staff member that was... Who was normally assigned to us, that may have been out for some reason, finding another person that was a fit for our district was sometimes just difficult to do because students are building relationships with people and having that person shift out and having a substitute come in. I think that consistency, the availability, the trust between the counselor and the student, and also family supports and having those conversations with the family unit, not just the student, where you're explaining that, you know, the impacts, because sometimes we're dealing with families who are coming from different sets of values, different cultures, and trying to acclimate into our system as a school district. And I think that's one of the bigger challenges, but I think the shift to bringing things in-house will be a greater support for students.
Anyone else?
One quick question. Sorry. The... I've seen a lot over the past couple of years, a lot of the great initiatives that are community-focused and driven, you know, bags for Elijah's promise and things of that nature. At the high school level, do we have... I'm looking particularly at the last page here and, you know, the different clubs and programs that are in place to help just support goodness and wellness and community mindfulness. Do we have a community service club at the high school that is specifically targeted at, you know, volunteer opportunities and engagement within the larger community, not just East Brunswick but beyond?
Mr. Cummings, we have a number of our clubs and activities and student associations have a volunteer component to them. So just one example is National Honor Society. You know, one of the commitments of the National Honor Society is to provide some volunteerism. So I think there's a little component of that in how we form our clubs and public service. I would have to pull the club activity list, what the current ones are, and I could report back out to the board at a later time about what we have that's specifically targeted volunteerism.
And the butterfly effect must spread to the high schools.
Yeah.
Can I add to that for a moment?
Sure.
I just want to say, it's... I don't think it's as formalized as some other things, but it is a tribute to our staff that many of the athletic teams volunteer with the younger athletic teams, which creates a very strong community mindedness. They expect varsity athletes to come out and work with the little kids and, you know, bring the community together, and parents get together that way. The other thing I wanted to say is that I don't know... I don't know if your kids have had the experience yet, but Youth Council in town, which is not through the district, is a phenomenal resource of getting the kids out there for volunteerism. They actually... And if you've had a kid... I mean, I'm sure people here know, but if you've ever had a kid try to sign up for the matrix for events in the school to volunteer, it's like it goes live, and then everybody hops on the ice cream socials really fast, and they start picking... They all want to volunteer. So you're absolutely right. It's amazing, and we could always grow more, but we have quite a bit already. It's great. Anyone else?
Yep. So you mentioned about the families' function, dealing with our children's behavior issues. Education children is not just family, not just school. We are partners. The entire community need to work together to educate our children. So I know we have Parenting University activities. We invite all kinds of experts to give lectures. So in your plan or in your aspect, so how can you use the PTAs and how to use Parents' University to teach our parents so they can regulate, they can be their children's model, and then they eventually will improve students' behavior in school?
Mr. Huang, so one of the... As everyone in this room knows, time is valuable. If you have children and you have a job, you are running, you know, from morning to night. And we saw at Parent University, getting people to commit to physically come out to an event at school that is... In some people's mind, is informational but yet not necessarily required. Maybe it's just they want to hear what we have to say. We've tried live streaming. We have tried the digital format, and I think we have a greater audience that way. The problem we have in those kinds of events is we no longer have the ability to kind of double-check with our recipient. We're delivering the message, but how are they receiving it? Are they understanding what we're saying? So there's definitely delivery, and there's people logging in, but I think we've got to find a more creative way to bring people out. Because I think if we bring people out and physically see things, and they hear things, and they interact with a social circle of people at the event, and as we've seen with many... If you look at adults, the one thing that drives adults and will bring adults to a meeting is food. And so if you do have abilities, and we've worked with EVA and the grants that they've had, where they funded different food activities for parents, which is a great partnership and resource for us. But if you can come out, you don't have to worry about feeding your family. The kids get a piece of pizza or something to eat. The parents get to hear something. I think that's a focus we're going to look at for the next round of interventions with families.
Thank you. And babysitters.
I don't know about babysitters.
I know, but when we provide babysitters, people come out.
And our schools, our elementary schools on back-to-school nights and have done that, have had services for parents, and that's been a great resource where they can drop their children off and then they go see their teacher.
Absolutely.
Sorry. I just had a really quick follow-up question on Lori Herrick's comment. In terms of cell phones, we know that the governor has said he's in favor of not having student access to cell phones during school. Where... Do you have any comment on where we're at in terms of implementing such a thing?
So we have been working this school year with the secondary principals, especially the Hammerhill, cell phones are restricted during the day. But Churchill and the high school, we have been... And we've been involving Hammerhill administration to look at a more consistent application of actually restricting cellphone usage at the high school and Churchill. There are a lot of districts who are reporting that there are better outcomes when students don't have their phones out. We do have pouches in the classrooms where teachers can house the cell phones. And you may have seen these... Uh, and you may have seen these, um, the magnetic lockable.
Yonders.
Yeah, the devices that you can buy the key to unlock it from Amazon. So, it's not very effective. Uh, so you buy a forty-dollar pouch, you think it's locked up, students can go on Amazon, buy the key. Um, so we don't think that's, that's the wise investment, it's more about a change in behavior and the utilization of the phone. And, you know, we hear a lot from parents that they need to contact their child, they need to check in with them, or what if my child needs to reach me for some reason? Um, and we all, we understand, that's a legitimate, a legitimate concern, but we do have an office staff that can get to a student. Um, so getting that phone in the backpack and keeping it there is really our objective, you know, not necessarily taking away from them, but putting it away, turning it off, putting it away and not having it easily accessible, uh, during the day, I think will be a greater outcome in terms of supporting the health of our students and in terms of, uh, feeling of safety and security for our staff.
Policy and Policy Committee.
Yeah, so we are, we are actively moving that to a policy discussion. We have that meeting set up.
We have a draft, we have a draft policy, uh, where you need to wrap that up internally, and then we'll be scheduling a Policy Committee meeting.
But that'll, that'll be planned before the end of the school year?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, not at the request of the public, but at the request of the Board, trying to be responsive to the Board and remembering that not everybody has a job that forces them to go hours and hours without going to the bathroom. I'm just kind of used to. Oh, I'm sorry, the public, I am so sorry. Uh, so it's a public hearing on the Student and Safety Data System. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment? All right, it's the same as before, state your name and address, Board Secretary will keep the time, it's three minutes, thank you.
Um, Dom Scovani, Six, uh, Fair, Fairfield Road. Um, a few things, um, I actually, in 10th grade, one of my teachers, it was like a requirement to like put the cellphone in the cellphone thing, so I'm not sure if that's, oh, sorry, I'm not sure if that's something you're looking at. Um, I also, with, with this, um, from my experience, it's always been like the quote-unquote "good" kids would participate in this and the quote-unquote "bad" kids wouldn't. So, is this really helping? I want, I want to know, like, is this decreasing bullying and stuff like that? Um, you know, even, even when I was in Sources of Strength, there were, there were kids who probably shouldn't have been in that. Um, yeah, so I did, I just want to know if, if this is working, um, if, uh, you know, maybe, I don't know. Dr. Figaro, you're an expert in this, maybe you can have your two cents in it. But that's, that's, that's my questions, and I hope after you close this, it can be answered, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Mama, thank you.
Rachel Botnick, Two Six Two Bromley Place. I'm watching this and listening to this, and, um, all of the things that you're talking about, volunteerism and all of that, you're targeting the wrong students. Those students will always volunteer for those things. The children that are being insubordinate in the classrooms are the ones that you need to help. So, I really think that you guys need to go back to the drawing board and maybe talk about a little more differentiated instruction in the classroom, because it's not happening, and maybe your SEL programs are not working very well, but the children that you're targeting with all of these things are not the ones that need the help. So, I just want to say that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right, then I'm going to close the public portion of the public hearing on student safety data. And now, I'm going to ask for, do I have to get a motion on this? Okay, I'm just going to call for a very, very strict five-minute recess so that the Board can perhaps stand up, use the bathroom, and hurry right back. All right, we will be back in five minutes, thank you. All right, thank you, we appreciate the patience. All right, now we come to For the Good of the Cause for the Public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. In order to permit the fair and orderly expression of such comment, the Board shall provide a period for public comment at every meeting of the Board. Each person is permitted to speak for up to three minutes, the Board Secretary will keep the time. When you step up, if you could please, state your name, address, unless you are a student, and then your name and school. Is there anyone wishing to address the Board tonight?
Long time no see.
Hi, Dom.
Good evening, Dom Scovani, Six Fairfield Road. Um, first, just want to say, Dr. Valeski, congrats on retirement. Um, like ten years, wow, you were, you were my superintendent. Um, I'm, I'm, I, I, me and my, my parents and my family still laugh at the snow day messages. I think, I think there was one about a dog. Um, yeah.
Bentley, yeah.
Yeah, Bentley, yep, yep, yep. Um, next, uh, I do want to give my thoughts and prayers to, uh, Mr. Brodmann, sadly passed away. Um, I personally didn't have him, but my, uh, siblings and friends did. I heard nothing but nice things. Um, it, it's crazy, like the la, I, I did, I spoke to him on occasion and it's crazy to think, uh, spoke to him like four years ago and, yeah, so may he rest in peace. Um, but yeah, um, that, uh, and thank you for that conversation we just had. Um, yeah, thank you. Let's go Mets, they won today.
Thanks, Tom. Is there anyone else?
Kimberly Shama, Eleven Ellison Avenue. Um, I went to a wrestling meet at the high school in the winter, and I noticed that the sports banners are not updated for more than five years. So, I'd like to see, you know, those updated for the students to recognize their athletic achievements, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, Michelle Bethy, Five Watchong Road. I'm here tonight as a parent and advocate for children with dyslexia. Um, dyslexia is a learning disability that affects reading, spelling, writing, and even math. It's not a vision problem or a lack of effort, it's the most common learning disability affecting one in five children. That means in every classroom, there are likely several students with dyslexia, many of whom remain unidentified and unsupported. Our district is failing these students. We still do not have a universal dyslexia screener in place, and without it, students slip through the cracks, labeled incorrectly, blamed for behaviors rooted in frustration, and left behind academically. Even when screenings do happen, because it is required by law, I wonder about what comes next. Who is certified to provide the intervention? Thirty hours of IMSE training is not enough. Dyslexia intervention requires highly-trained professionals who can deliver individualized, explicit, and systematic instruction, something our district is not currently equipped to provide. Furthermore, the use of IMSE scope and sequence takes too long to reach critical concepts. While we move slowly through the program, these students fall further and further behind, which affects their confidence and their motivation. I also want to be very clear, structured literacy and balanced literacy cannot coexist. Balanced literacy promotes guessing strategies, leveled texts, and incidental phonics. These approaches are not only ineffective for students with dyslexia, they are harmful. Structured literacy is grounded in decades of science, it's direct, cumulative, diagnostic, and essential for students with reading disabilities. I also want to remind you, it isn't just phonics instruction that's needed, we need to be targeting fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension as well. The district must stop ignoring dyslexia. I know of several parents who have been told that it doesn't matter whether their child is tested for dyslexia, that a label won't change the instruction, but that's simply not true. Identifying dyslexia does matter, because it opens the door to the kind of targeted, evidence-based instruction these students need to succeed. Our children deserve to be identified early and given the right support, not delayed, not dismissed, not denied. Anything less is educational negligence, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there anyone else?
Chad Seeler, Eleven Apache Court. Uh, I just want to say, as a former Board member, the time you people put in is, people have to understand what you do. Uh, back when I was on the Board, on Wednesday night, you'd get a packet about six o'clock. I'd read that packet till twelve thirty, one o'clock in the morning, get up to go to work on Thursday, come here for a meeting, sit in the back room till about midnight, and get home Friday and go to work. So, thank you very much for the time you guys put in. It's, it's, it's underappreciated what you guys do. Dr. Valeski, congratulations on retirement, I consider you a friend, and I'll definitely miss you. Uh, Dr. Pan, thank you for coming here and, uh, just, you know, that seat was open, I texted Lou, that was my seat for years next to Lou. I thought it was open for me this evening, I was going to jump into it, but my wife would kill me, so no. Um, and, uh, thank you for saying that you do read the emails that come through. Um, other than that, I just want to say thank you for your time you put in there. Congratulations, Dr. Valeski, and read my missive, you don't need middle school football, thanks.
Thanks, Chad. All right, I'm going to close the public portion. I, I do want to say, just as a general point of interest, we get the packets much earlier now, we get it the week before. All right, I am going to, I don't need a motion to combine it.
No.
All right, I'm going to combine the entire agenda, that does not change our ability for discussion of anything, um, but I would like a motion for the full agenda. I need a motion for the full agenda before discussion.
If there's something you want to abstain on, you can.
That, that's what I want to.
Just cite what that item is.
Okay, okay, fine.
It'll be a roll call, so it'll be simple. Can I get a motion?
No.
All right, Tim and Lori, thank you. All right, all in favor? Oh, sorry, oh, gosh, I'm tired, discussion. We'll start it then, and we'll just work our way across.
Uh, uh, I'm sorry, is this covering the Human Resources section?
Everything.
Everything, okay. Uh, just, uh, two quick questions for items one and three under Human Resources with the teaching agreement with, uh, TCNJ and Montclair. Uh, I just wanted some context, how long have we been working with those two institutions?
I, I, I've reviewed these agreements for a number of years, and it's for complete student teachers.
Right, right, right.
So, we do, we do it with, uh, Montclair, TCNJ, um, King University.
It's a new one, yes. Yeah, that's a new one, I remember that from a previous meeting.
So, that, this is a very standard thing, so that we could place student teachers and increase, you know, teaching.
Yeah, 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 thanks, I just wanted some context. Um, the, the thing specifically for item one, TCNJ one, my son attends TCNJ, he intends to, I can still vote, okay, great. E, e, even though he's planning on being a high school teacher, I don't think his student teaching would be here though, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Comes here later, maybe. Lou, did you have anything for this one? Okay, Jamie? Lee Wu? Okay, over here, anyone? All right, this is a roll call vote.
Anna Braun.
Okay, um, yes on everything except human resources. Item four, I need to abstain, um, on employee twenty-six, twenty-seven, nine.
Noted.
Thank you.
Timothy Cummings.
Yes.
Jamie Falco.
Yes.
Louis Figaroa.
Yes.
Lori Herrick.
Yes.
Lee Wu Hong.
Yes.
Wilbur Pan.
Yes.
Heather Gloss.
Yes. All right, motion carries. We have no need for a second closed, right? We do not, all right. We have a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Go to the class.
Huh? Oh, I'm so sorry, go to the calls for the Board.
Thank you.
I did not turn to the end. Go to the calls for the Board. Would you like to start? Go for it, I, I have.
Yeah.
I have to pull out my notes, so go right ahead.
Yeah, okay.
I'm on deck.
Um, so, um, I, I think I neglected to mention this, uh, before, but in case I didn't, um, you know, thanks to the community for all of their help in the budget process. I, uh, I, I know we all really appreciate it. Um, you know, again, despite what some people, uh, may, may be thinking, we really do appreciate all the input, and I do, you know, personally think that this made this a much better process than it did last year. Second thing, um, May is Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Um, this goes on for the month of May, this has been going on since the nineteen nineties. Um, we used to get a week, um, since the nineteen seventies, but we got bumped out a month, uh, in, 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 in the nineties, and it's actually especially apropos here in, uh, in the part of New Jersey that we live in, um, because as it turns out, Middlesex County is the one county, is the county in New Jersey that has the highest percentage of Asian-Americans, um, in it with twenty-five percent. And here in East Brunswick, not, we're actually a little bit above that, um, this is, you know, estimated census data because of how they do, uh, do that in, uh, off census years, but, uh, but East Brunswick, um, you know, we, we have about twenty-eight percent Asian-American Americans, so, uh, that, that's great. Even more apropos, in New Jersey, we're one of, um, two states, to my knowledge, that has, um, incorporated Asian-American, uh, history into the, uh, curriculum, um, which I think is a fantastic thing. We came in behind my home state of Illinois, which was the first state to implement that, and then a little aside, personal aside, my sister, who's a high school teacher in the, in the northern suburbs of Chicago, uh, actually did some work to make sure that that went through, so I'm now mad at her that she beat us to this, um, thing. And then finally, at the library, there is a table right by where you come in with all kinds of information, um, on, uh, that's pertinent to, um, Asian-American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, uh, including, uh, information on voting, um, and, um, and AAPI of East Brunswick, uh, has been instrumental in putting this together and, you know, conflict of interest, my wife mans the table, uh, pretty frequently. But, uh, one of the things that, um, AAPI of East Brunswick, um, can do for our school district is provide resources for, uh, teachers that are looking to incorporate, uh, uh, to, uh, figure out how to incorporate this part of the curriculum, uh, into their, uh, lesson, uh, plans. There's a lot of resources that are out there, um, and, uh, from talking with the folks at AAPI of East Brunswick, it seems the feedback that they've gotten from teachers is not that no one's interested in, it's just that, uh, they don't know where to start. And that's a great resource, you know, for teachers. Um, uh, many of the stuff is free, and we all like free, especially in this, in, in this current economic environment, uh, one of which. Is a, is, is a poster called Roots and Roots of New Jersey and lots of, um, you know, uh, important things, um, that have happened in New Jersey regarding the Asian-American community. My understanding is, uh, you, um, you go to a website, which I don't have, so my bad, um, and, uh, and you can just get one of these for your classroom or wherever you want to stick this thing up. Um, this one has to go back to the library, so I can't give this one away, um, but it's there for anyone to, to take.
I'll send you the website, I ordered one.
Oh, great, thank you.
I did.
Perfect, and that's all I got, thanks.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Just a couple announcements, um, I, as you guys know, may or may not know, I'm fortunate to serve on the Human Relations Council. Uh, we celebrated Seek Culture and Appreciation recently at the, uh, library, where there were beautiful demonstrations of, um, martial arts and artistry, the food was lovely, it was a really wonderful experience. Um, I really, I love the diversity of our town. Um, upcoming, at the, uh, next council meeting on May twelfth at seven PM, the mayor will be announcing the AAPI Heritage Month proclamation, for those of you who'd like to come out and support our, uh, Asian-American community, um, that would be lovely. And lastly, on Monday, May nineteenth, at six-thirty, uh, at the Municipal Pond, is the Ninth Annual Unity Walk. We would love to see you there, um, we have a featured speaker, Nick Cabrera, a local veteran and business owner, and, um, we're really, uh, pleased to have everyone in the community come out to celebrate each other, thank you.
All right. Um, I have a few things. Um, I wanted to thank the library for hosting the Seek awareness, it was an amazing event and it took up a large portion of the library, but it was wonderful to see the diversity of. wonderful to see the diversity of our students getting to show their culture to other children. The same, because I'm on the RPAB committee, I got to go to the opening of the cricket pitch. My neighbor down the street is so excited, she's about six, and she's been promising to show me how to play cricket for about a couple of months now, but we have, I believe, the only cricket pitch in the county with lights, which gives our kids a unique opportunity to play. I was able to attend Arbor Day, the Arbor Day celebration, which was held at Memorial. And thank you to the women's club for providing the tree for that. It's an amazing thing to be able to talk to that many small children, and it's amazing that that many small children could pay attention, because there were many dandelions all around them outside, and they were great. But mostly, I wanted to talk about the celebration of the night school students, the GED, ESL, and citizenship students. That's a program that's run here through community programs. Amory Gilbert, if you haven't had the opportunity, you are missing out on one of the most dynamic resources and hidden gems of East Brunswick, but it was amazing. My only thought through most of it was that I was so sad I hadn't gone previously. We offer night school classes in English for students, adult students, to earn their GEDs. People had their appointments, they're just waiting for their interviews to get their citizenship, and I think the most beautiful thing that came out of the evening was the, was the ESL class, the student who passed? Yeah, the ESL class lost an adult student in a tragic incident, and her adult children were there to speak, and they said of her, she believed in the power of words, even if words did not come easily, which I was very touched by, because I think all of education is like that, instilling children the power of words, even if they don't come easily. But it was a beautiful event, I will never miss it again, it was amazing. And the food there was also very good. That's all from me.
It was plentiful, as well.
There was so much food. It was great. Go ahead.
I will also say, last year, when I chaired community programs, I did also attend that, and it was amazing. They just want to share their food and their culture with you and tell you how excited and appreciative they are of the programs that we offer here in East Brunswick, and how they're just so happy to be a part of it and attend, and their families as well. I just want to say that May 16, the library is holding a teen stress last night, where the library will close to all regular patrons at 5:00. The event will start at 5:30. We're hoping that kids in grades eight through 12 will go. It's right as exams are ending, we're going to have some really great stuff going on, interactive activities, and just the chance to de-stress and relax. On May 21, there's also going to be a presentation by Jonathan Briesing, he's going to speak about the book, The Anxious Generation, that's going to be at the Community Arts Center at 6:30. It's going to be followed by a student and expert panel, some from our own district here, and we will talk more about anxiety, stress, teens, cell phones. So, it's going to be a great event, 6:30, May 21, at the Community Arts Center. On April 14, I did email the board that although budget hearings in person had concluded, written testimony was still going to be accepted, so I'm hoping that everybody sent an email or two. Also, today I had the opportunity to stop by the Department of Education, they had their public hearing. I did speak as a parent during public comments. I spoke about the timeframe that we have, as was discussed today, to make decisions. I talked about special education funding and how those, you know, I had those concerns as a parent, and so I'm hoping that we can all continue to do the same. I'll make a suggestion, although I know that we'll have many more discussions after this, but I do suggest that as a board, maybe one of our first steps after this process be that we write a letter, either, you know, together as a board or administration, and kind of look at it, to the Department of Education. They did say today during their public portion that they will accept letters in writing, snail mail, emails, from anybody who is interested in reaching out to them on any topic, and I think that we just outline our losses or how the funding formula or anything else has affected us in the past year or two. Again, I don't know if it'll have an impact, right? I mean, when I was there today, there were people from Old Bridge and Lacey Township who were talking about the cuts that they're experiencing as well. So, I just think it's a good first step, and so, it's just a suggestion.
Can't hurt.
Tim?
I just want to piggyback on that, and I want to give you, Lori, and I know Lee Wu's been involved, and Jamie, I hear you're getting involved as well. You're putting a tremendous amount of effort into this, and I have a lot of respect for that. I think it's really impressive. I, myself, have failed miserably. No, truthfully, I have, I mean, as it relates to, you know, fighting that fight. With that being said, I think that we, as a community, and I think it starts with this board, and we've heard this from community members as well, I think we need to be more strategic in our effort and, you know, united in our effort, and I think that that will ultimately be more effective. This year is going to be a very interesting year, you know, as it relates to the governor's race and the changes that we're going to start to see, but I really would encourage us to, you know, I want to just take it a step beyond that, too, and really think about, you know, forming a committee that is going to create and implement a strategy that includes members of the community to work on sort of a united front towards this, and perhaps even members of other communities as well. So, I would be more than happy to be a part of that, and I think we really need to focus on that, like, tomorrow.
Anyone else? And I almost forgot, many of us attended the EBEF Dinner, Partners in Excellence, it was an amazing event, very grateful for all they do for our schools. Also, a shout-out, I believe it's School Nurses Day as well today. I am a huge fan, especially of the one that puts up with my littlest one, who likes to visit her every day. Ms. Samuels is amazing. And I also wanted to thank Mr. Malta for organizing a beautiful signing day. They just get more and more perfectly organized, and it is really nice that, if you haven't had the opportunity to go to the high school for one, they let the students that are signing have the rest of their team and their friends come out of class to see it, and it's one thing to be proud and have your family there, it's another thing to have all of your friends, even briefly. So, that was phenomenal. Also, thank you to the ladies in the back for keeping the district's website, or, sorry, Facebook page so active. That has been fantastic. People have been commenting to me about what they see up there, so we really appreciate it.
I can attest that Karen has a mandate she posts every single day, every day, and she's out there trying to gather information from people, like, give me stuff to put up, so, yeah, there's a lot of stuff to report.
Well, she's not only helping us as a district get the great news out, but she might also be helping people that are, I don't know, teachers in other districts that didn't know that it was School Nurses Day until Karen posted it and was able to go say thank you. So, thanks. But no, we're getting a ton, I know I'm getting a ton of positive feedback about the amount of information about what's going on in the district, so we really appreciate that. All right, now, can I ask, can I have a motion to adjourn? Anna and Wilbur, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Yes, everyone was enthused for that.